I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Cadillac Planning Commission meeting here for Monday, November 27, 2017. If I could, please ask anybody if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. It goofed up a jut over there that does our taping, video. And then after that, if I could, ask everybody to join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could please have roll, Mr. Wallace.
Philkins.
Here.
Smith.
Peterson.
Here.
Schickto.
Here.
Gregg.
Fent.
Here.
Putvin.
Here. Thank you. Just having up.
Hopefully, everyone had a chance for approval of this evening's agenda, again, for November 27, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, Ms. Philkins, seconded by Mr. Fent.
Schickto.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
Next, I need approval here of our last meeting, which was October 23, 2017, of the meeting minutes, which wasn't bad.
It's pretty easy to read out.
It was.
I'll make a motion.
First by Mr. Fent.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson.
Fent.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Schickto.
Yes.
Peterson.
Here.
Putvin.
Yes. Thank you. This evening, we have two public hearings, so we'll keep moving. First public hearing is to consider a request from Howard Wright for a special land use permit at 1216 Leeson Avenue for the use as an auto, light truck, engine body repair, and undercoating in an enclosed building. That site currently is zoned I-1, light industrial. Having read that, I will turn that over to Mr. Wallace or Mr. Coy.
I'm going to handle this one. I did the staff report for you folks.
Thank you, sir.
Howard Wright purchased the property this, earlier this year, this summer, and he had his body shop, custom body shop, in Herring Township. He bought the property, brought the business here into a building that I understand had been vacant. It is in our industrial area. He, of course, purchased it with the intention of doing this and understanding that was an allowed use. What he did not know is it's allowed, but it technically is a special land use. So there are certain criteria that need to be met. This is basically the signage he's got up. Everything is fine with the signage that's there. They've actually started business. They've remodeled the office area, so they have already done some improvements to the building. Again, the site is zoned light industrial. The neighboring properties all around it are industrial, and ironically, directly across the street, it's heavy industrial, where padnoses and so forth. You also have next door Four Winds Boat. As you can, as we all know, they do a lot of outside storage of the molds and so forth. So this is, for example, looking directly north of the property where Wrights are located. There are a number of standards that need to be considered, and I'm going to go through these quickly. Basically, the first one has to do with the character of this being harmonious with what's around it, and the building and the type of business. Staff, myself, feels it does fit the character of the industrial park around it. It basically should not change the character of the surrounding area, and again, my opinion is this use is not clearly going to change the character of the surrounding businesses. Interfere with general enjoyment of adjacent property. This is not anticipated to interfere in any way with neighboring businesses and what they actually do. It technically should represent an improvement to the user character of the property. The building, in fact, was vacant. They've purchased it. They've remodeled the interior office area, so they are doing some things to, you know, make it usable for their business. This land use shall not be hazardous to adjacent property. The health, safety, welfare persons of the community deals with traffic noise, odor, fumes. This type of use, because you have paint booths and Mr. Wright is here, he can explain any questions you might have on that, but those type of things are highly regulated. And I understand that our fire marshal, those types of businesses, they are inspected annually, so they're inspected quite frequently, and it has everything to do with potential for fire and different emissions. And Mr. Wright, if you have questions on specifics of what he has, he can answer those for you at the end here. The special use needs to be adequately serviced by public facilities, services. All the utilities, water, sewer, all the utilities are already in place at that location. It shall not place demands on public services in excess of the current capacity. This type of use will not affect the capacity of our, you know, utility system at all. It should not put any additional demands on it. The special land use needs to be consistent with the intent and purpose of the ordinance and the long-range comprehensive plan. The city master plan clearly addresses our industrial district, and this, of course, does fall within that. Lastly, one of the standards has to do with a fencing for outdoor play area for children. This is not applicable to this use in any way. For example, childcare. That is a special use, and that, in my understanding, is why this specific standard is in there for, you know, childcare in excess of six children, which we've brought before you before. So the particular standards for a special use, I don't see anything out of ordinary that would potentially create a problem. We did put a public notice in the newspaper. We did it according to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and we also sent notices to neighboring property owners. Did not receive any correspondence, any negative, anything negative from any of the surrounding One staff recommendation I have, and the ordinance is old, but they specifically use the term "auto." And I definitely think that if this planning commission approves it, the word "truck" should be included, because a pickup truck is not an automobile. And the ordinance in Section 46-491, it specifically says "auto body," and there's nowhere in there that references trucks. So I do think that that particular word should be added. Based on the findings presented, this commission, you can approve it. You can approve it with conditions, or you can deny this special land use. And reasonable conditions may be attached if, you know, you see fit. That is all I have to say. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. Mr. Wright is here, if you have any questions for him.
Let's have a brief one in his description. I read the word "light truck."
Yep. I put that in.
You put that in.
Yes.
Is that still okay with Mr. Wright, meaning "light truck," or we open this to all size trucks? Does it matter?
Well, why, what I actually ran into is when I went and took this particular picture, there actually happened to be a semi-truck tractor, was not a trailer, and the front-right fiberglass fender was broken. So obviously, he has the ability to repair that, and I had actually, yeah, I, and that's a good point. To me, that does not seem out of the ordinary. You know, you've literally got a former truck line terminal directly across the street next to padnos. So it certainly is an area that is used to seeing semi-trucks, tractors. I don't think we want to get into a situation where you have a lot of trailers parked around there. That's not what the use is for. But having seen that semi-tractor with the broken fiberglass on the right front fender, I thought this should be considered.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything for Mr. Coy before we move forwards?
I think it looks like a perfect place for the business.
Yeah, great.
That building's been vacant for 20-some years since I've been here.
Okay.
Nobody can complain about the, any kind of the chemicals or any kind of the exposure with the paint, because Four Winds is right there, and then they put fiberglass paint, everything, to their stacks.
Okay. Got Mr. Wright up?
Yeah.
Want to open the public hearing, or you got questions for Mr. Wright?
No.
Not so. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Could he use the word "vehicles" rather than "cars and trucks"? I mean, would that suffice, or? I would think absolutely.
That way, it can be anything from a, you know, farm tractor to a, to anything.
Absolutely. The term "vehicles" will be.
Okay. Well, I guess if nobody has anything for Mr. Wright, I'll just open the public hearing and keep moving, yes? You all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing here. Again, this is for the special land use here for Mr. Howard Wright at 1216 Leeson Avenue for the use of vehicle and engine body repair and undercoating in an enclosed building. So anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this, please come forwards. Just state your name and write down your address. Okay? Everybody's good with that? Okay? Anyone in the audience wishing to not have this move forwards? Okay? At this time, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and the board will chat about this. So at this time, public hearing is closed on this. And board will discuss, and, okay, you're good. So, keep moving.
I can't think of a better thing to put it.
Okay, no, a perfect, right, and it's.
You okay?
I'm okay. I'd just like to say, I drove by that property recently, and I think that if it had multiple big trucks sitting there, it would be offensive to anybody. I mean, not that you'd want 20 of them sitting there, but I can envision three to four, five sitting there, and it wouldn't be a nice sight to anyone.
Well, if you do that, we're going to make you plant a bunch of trees. Tall trees.
I probably won't be working on one stem line with one end.
I'm just messing with you, okay?
But I do have a big door.
That would require that, yes.
It's nice that it's got something in there, because it's been vacant for so long.
I make a motion to accept this program subject to the comments of.
Verbiage on the vehicle or trucks?
Yes.
Okay?
I support it.
Well, we got lots of seconds though, but I think Ms. Philkins beat Joe, so.
You gotta talk faster.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. We're good. It's all good. Roll call, please.
Schickto.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes. Perfect. Motion passed. You're good, sir.
Howard, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay. Next public hearing. We have a public hearing here to consider requests from William Goodwill for a special land use at 305 Seneca Place as a two-family residential in an existing building. The site is zoned R-3, one-family residential. Having read that, Mr. Wallace is in place this time. Okay.
Change it up, keep you.
That's okay. Keep me on my toes, sir.
The property at 305 Seneca was adjusted from a single-family home into kind of a two-unit type of dwelling to take care of a specific family situation. But it was done with the idea that it was not going to be an ongoing two-unit, but merely two separate units under one ownership and for a family member. Now, the property is going to be sold, and they're looking to make sense out of essentially a property that has two housekeeping units, two kitchens, bedrooms in both units, separated by a garage and so forth, and so to, so that the person who would be buying this unit would know what they could do with the property. They wanted to legitimize what's been going on in the property for some years already.
So this use, if I may, sir, was not conforming at the time?
Well, it probably was approved, I don't know that it would have needed a special approval to operate under one family, as long as there was only one set of utilities and so forth, that you can have kind of that separate unit, as long as it's not a separate, you know, address, separate, separable unit. And so now, they want the ability to do that.
Gotcha.
How do you advance?
You see that on the right? No, no, way right. Just click it once.
Oh, here.
Yep.
The, this is the picture of the primary home. It looks like any other home in the area. To allow for the residential property to be used as a two-family dwelling in an existing building, that's what's being requested. The property is currently zoned R-3, which is one family. All R-1 through R-4 is intended to be the most restricted, so we really want to be somewhat careful about what we do in a single-family district that's R-1 through R-4. The additional dwelling unit would be what you see on the far side, the opposite where the garage door would be. The two buildings are connected, but you would not pass from the one dwelling unit into the other. It would separate it by the garage, and it's my understanding that the proper fire separation walls have been installed. So this other unit would be literally distinct and separate from the primary residential In addition, Mike went through a lot of the general standards. Because this is of a residential nature, it also had some specific standards that also had to be met. And the basis of determination includes specific standards relating to two-family and multiple-family use requests. The following guidelines shall be used when evaluating multiple-family use requests in single-family zones. Lot size: 50 percent of the underlying zoning will be added for each additional unit that is proposed. Lot coverage: The lot coverage for specific land use requests shall meet the requirements set forth in the underlying zoning of the area. This request does meet those standards. The minimum square footage for the following apartment types shall be, and then you can see those square footages, the units do meet those square-foot standards. Parking: Each unit shall have appropriate parking spaces for two vehicles. These spaces must have clear ingress and egress. They also cannot be developed in the required front or side yard setbacks. Right now, the one, the primary home, obviously, would have the two stalls that are in the garage. They also have some ability to park to the rear of those stalls that are in the garage. It gets a little trickier when you talk about the extra unit. It would have the far side of the driveway, but only parking for one unless you stacked them in line with each other. So it gets a little different, and one of my later recommendations will address that. Two-family and multiple-family uses in single-family zones shall not be within three times the required lot width of the underlying zoning of each other. There's not a problem with other two-family in this area. This aerial gives you kind of the flavor for what's happening in the area. You can see single-family homes around the proposed special-use site. To the west of the site, you have Mobile Home Park, which is actually at a denser level than even this two-family dwelling would be on this particular site. This gets into the standards that Mike went through, and I'll try to not get overly involved in each of these. It shall be harmonious and maintained with the neighborhood character. I feel with the recommendations that I'll be making, that it could be in keeping with the character of the area. It has a similar look, architectural styling, has landscaping, and so forth. Shall not change the character of the area, in that we're not seeing any additional buildings. The character that it has today will remain the character that it'll have, essentially not changing the character in terms of any new additional building space. Shall not interfere with the enjoyment of adjoining properties. Nothing will change. I don't think there will be additional impacts. You'll have a similar number of people dwelling within the two units. If anything, you might have a little bit more. They might have to set forth some standards if they go to rentals as to what are the specific abilities of each unit to control different parts of the property. It shall represent an improvement to user character of the property. While there won't be any new construction, I will be making a couple minor recommendations that I think will produce a slight improvement to the aesthetic of the area as it exists The existing land use of this home was built around a specific family situation. Now that the property is to be sold, this application is an attempt, is this the beginning sign?
No, that's the, that's the finding.
Now that the property is to be sold, this application is an attempt to make use of the property and fit into a mainstream condition. Staff recommends conditions apply if this application is approved. Okay, again, special land use should not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses of materials or equipment which will be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare purposes through excessive traffic noise, odor, fumes, or glare. There will be no such conditions present on the property. Existing land use.
I think you went up instead of down.
The special land use shall not place demands on public services and facilities in excess of the current capacity. The public services are adequate at this particular site. Special land use shall be consistent with the intent and purpose of the ordinance, the objectives of the current master plan. The proposed land use is consistent with the intent, in that the ordinance does provide for special land use of a duplex in this unit for existing buildings. The last standard would not be applicable. Again, as Mike talked about, it's related to mostly daycare-type facilities. Again, there would, there are no alleys or other safety concerns around this property other than for daycare, so offense would not be required. We did give the notification by notice in the paper. We also noticed people within 300 feet of the subject site. We did get two letters. They were included in your packet. One simply acknowledged that they didn't see how things would change, and that there had been two separate families living in the facility in the dwelling units right now, and they didn't see that that would change. The other letter thinks that it would be setting a bad precedent to formally establish a two-family in the single-family neighborhood. Pretty state-forward concern expressed there. Those are the only two comments that we've received. Now, getting back to meeting the, saying that, the recommendation that the standards were met, we don't know if these units become both rentals, how many cars there would be. You would assume that maybe up to two cars could be needed for both dwellings. In that regard, while you do have two for both units, the one, having the two for the one unit requires stacking the vehicles, which would require juggling of the vehicles. For that reason, I recommended that they add one additional stall off the main driveway so that both units could have two spaces that didn't require juggling of the vehicles and could have access directly from the primary drive. As you'll see in an upcoming photo, a lot of the storage for the second unit was done in front of the garage. I think it would make sense to require a small shed, probably 64 square feet in size, so that things that were needed for maintenance of the drive of the property could be maintained inside and not outside the dwelling. That the yard area to the south of both dwelling units be usable by occupants of both dwelling units. Again, that's where the predominant amount of open space for the lot is located. That any of the units that will become rental property would have to be registered with the city's rental inspection program, and that the unit just be inspected to make sure, even though it's our understanding that the appropriate fire separation walls are in place, just that that fact be verified by the city's fire department. Those would be the recommendations, if you were so inclined to consider approval. And again, the options would be, you know, to approve as presented, with conditions that I presented, with other conditions that you may wish to impose or to deny the application. And again, this final picture is just a demonstration that, you know, with trash containers, gas cans, shovels, or rakes kind of thing, that if there were a small shed facility, that a lot of these things could be maintained inside and have a more clean appearance to the property.
Thank you for the presentation, John. Can you tell, can you tell us if there's any other? Can you tell, can you tell us if there's any other rentals around that? Cause we had a situation like this up in Simpson, and we didn't want to sprinkle a rental in the middle of single-family.
Well, not on that street, but down on North Boulevard. It looks like there's an old motel. It has been sectioned off into rooms. I live on Wynona, it would be one over from me to the west. And that's multi-family, I assume.
Right.
It's like little apartments, and then their front building has a couple apartments still too.
Kevin, I can answer that. The ordinance very clearly says there can be no other multi-unit rentals within three times the lot width for that zoning district. That zoning district being an R3 is minimum lot width of fifty feet. So essentially, there are only, the ordinance only addresses properties that would be within a hundred and fifty feet of that property.
Okay.
Uh, an R1, which is minimum hundred-foot lot, that would be three hundred feet. So, in looking through the rental registrations with Cindy, while a home can be rented, we were not able to identify any multi-family rentals, two-family rentals, within that three-times distance.
How many, um, first-class mails, mailings did you do in regards to this property?
I would have to get the list from Cindy. You mean to neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna estimate there were probably twenty. I, I, I can look that up specifically.
And that, it gives me an idea.
Yeah. Um, the uh, Mobile Home Park directly behind it, Cindy contacted them and they were going to, we gave them the public notice and they were gonna distribute it to the people in that area.
On the ten-by-twenty parking pad, you guys didn't stipulate any type of a surface type?
Well, I think that would be to your discretion. I think the desire was to, I think he actually proposes that right now has a gravel space, but um, I think there would be an option to, um, if you wanted, felt it needed to be paved, you could also consider that as a condition. I think that probably should be specified if, if, if you want to get specific about that.
See, and then I'm still questioning, you know, this being a rental in the middle of all these single-family.
Is there any precedent of the Cadillac proper that, that allows this or disallows this?
No.
I mean, well, the ordinance permits it. I mean, I guess the other thing to keep in mind is, we don't have anything that stops multiple houses from being rental, one right after the other in the single-family rental category. You can have three or four houses in a row that are rental properties, um, and, you know, there's no regulations uh, in regard to that.
The sketch you've got here indicates uh, a widening of the driveways, or driveways?
Uh, no, the sketch is of the existing driveway and you'll see a, an offshoot parking stall, which would create the second space for the uh, the secondary uh, unit, the one that's built next, um... Well, the one that, that goes with this unit right here.
So, it's going to be more than this. In order to accomplish that uh, drawing, it would require removing one of the one or two trees in there.
I, I didn't s... I don't know, perhaps the applicant could comment whether a tree would have to be removed to accomplish that space?
I don't think you would have to remove. I was out there and measured out a twenty-by-ten-foot parking space, the idea of putting like four-by-fours around it and digging down for gravel in there.
Well, you're in one point indicating that it will not change the uh, landscaping and then the, and, yeah, by widening the driveway, we're uh, changing the landscaping.
Well, the drive will stay the same, the landscape will stay the same. Essentially, what you would be getting is just one additional parking stall.
Any other questions here for staff, I guess, before we keep moving? Want the applicant in front for some questions? At this time, if we could please have the applicant, please step forwards, state your name and just write down your physical address on the paper there and hopefully there's a pen.
My name is William Goodwill. And forty-four twenty-eight Benson Road.
Okay? So I guess before I open public hearing, board has some questions, I guess. Go ahead.
The letter in opposition, um, if you look at it, it had a couple points here that I'd have to agree with. But you're gonna, this was before I knew we're gonna ask you to, to increase the driveway. But all summer, there was a boat jammed over in the corner there. So I guess what is the neighbors on that area, I'm just thinking the neighbors who are the houses. I guess I don't want to have a bunch of cars up on the blocks and boats that are being torn apart.
And neither do I. The lease agreement does not allow any vehicles other than two, no motorhomes, no boats. Finally, that was removed.
Yes. But I've known it's been a, it's been a multi-family since I've been there.
Right.
So, uh, that to me is no change. It's just a matter of now, instead of having a family, you have two families. That's the only question I have. I don't want the yard to look like it did before, so. And I don't know if there's anybody here from the neighborhood.
I used to live quite close to there.
That don't count though.
I didn't move because there were two units there holed together.
But, but they have, other than that, this last year, the last summer, there was that boat there and every once in a while, the other stuff there, but pretty much the house was maintained.
That was a failure on my part because he was breaking the lease agreement. And he did finally get it, he had two trailers there, actually.
Yeah, it, it just got pretty... So you're the owner, you're going to be the person that leases them out?
Uh, I am. I really, the only reason I'm doing this is because my real estate lady said that if we got it rezoned to be a multi-unit facility, it may enhance our ability to be able to sell it. I do not desire to have it. I would, for the last nine years, I did not desire to have it. But now the real estate market has gotten to the point that we might be able to sell it and not have to pay somebody to buy it.
It's a very nice area to have a house, I'll tell you that. It's a very nice area to raise children, I can tell you.
The lot, the lot size is like two-hundred-and-fifteen feet by a hundred-and-twenty-five. You could probably even put another unit on the other side. I won't say that.
I don't go there.
Okay.
Well, and we, you know, in this community, we need good rentals. And so, I would hate to discourage, if a home is already set up to provide two places for people to live at market-rate housing, I, I would hate to discourage that. But, on the other hand, um, you know, the ordinance as far as, you know, keeping the place, um, you know, without the vehicles and all of that, that activity happening in the yard for the neighbors to have to put up with.
Right.
It would have to be upheld.
That's true. Cause it got really bad there for a while.
Yeah.
And it's razor-come into the area of Chestnut, so it makes it worse.
He tells that he's not the person in control.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I, I could make a couple comments. Um, you have the ability as part of this to probably restrict the number of vehicles that would be stored. It's typical, even in our single-family neighborhoods, to allow the storage of a vehicle, as long as it's not a junk vehicle, uh, in the rear yards, not in the front yards or side yards. And so, if it's typical to have one boat or one travel trailer in the backyard, you could restrict the storage of vehicles to that in that they're going for a special land use. Um, and I think one of the reasons why I recommended it is the density, even with a two-unit, is not greater than the density of the surrounding areas because of the uh, oversized lot. You could also add as a restriction, uh, that the not, lot not be further subdivided, uh, so that potentially you could end up, if, if there was room to add another uh, lot, that the reason that you gave this approval, if you were so inclined, was the density that you have now with that extra property, but if that were to be broken off and sold, then that wouldn't be any longer true. So if you wanted, you could add that restriction of no further lot splits for the lot.
This proposed shed, where did you have an idea for that, sir? I mean, I'm looking at the aerial view and saying, well...
It, it would have to be by conventional standards in the rear or side yard.
Oh, great. I'm just looking at that aerial view, so, okay.
I might add, the ordinance for sheds basically reads that they're to be in the rear yards, but there have been a number of situations because of numerous lots throughout the city that, for example, have significant slope and so forth to them, that there, when people have had significant width to keep it ten feet from the house, then, you know, there have been some that have been allowed inside yards.
Well, that isn't the case in this, in this lot. That's not the case.
But there is also substantial side width buffering by the trees, provided not too many of those get taken out if that pad goes up there by the front.
Looks like the, uh, even in the side yard, you got a considerable amount of buffer from the front street.
Agreed.
Yeah, actually, if you spur it off, I, I don't know if you'd want to put what your plans are, but if you go square, square up beside the driveway, you're gonna have pavement, so to speak, right up in the front door. Are you going, do you intend on spurring it off and putting it where the boat was or something like that?
I would think it's going to go, intention with the recommendation that I handed in with the site plan, was that it would go toward the south.
Yeah, I see it.
You can bet.
You're gonna spur it to where, by basically where the boat was?
Yeah.
So, by the road there?
By the road, yes. Cause if he goes off to the side and goes parallel to the existence, tire up the front door.
It's right here.
Yeah, the, the offshoot space probably should be on the private property, and it looks like there's easily room to do that without taking out a tree.
Yeah, there's... He can work it where he wouldn't have a problem with that anyway.
I got a question for staff. Apparently, this extra unit has been there for a number of years. I believe nineteen-seventy was mentioned, but I wonder why, or if there was something special happened in the zoning or planning that allowed this second dwelling unit to be attached to the pre-existing one? I was just wondering if, there must have been a building permit that was granted. And I'm not trying to put somebody on the spot, but, you know, I'm just, if there was, it was legalized when it was built, where does that put us to change it?
It was legalized for a single-family.
Cause that was one family that lived in it.
Right. All the same family.
So if it was like a, they just made an addition, probably a mother-in-law house or whatever you call it.
Right, right. That'd be my guess.
Okay. Thank you.
In which case, that part doesn't pose a problem, but this other will.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a difference.
There's a difference. Yep.
That's why I said when you read the letter from people...
And one person didn't care and the other does.
But there were twenty mailings.
That's true. But the one that says it's no different than what it was, other than you're gonna have two separate families versus one.
Yes.
Which may be a better thing.
Actually, from the day it was built, it was functional, like two different families, even though it was an extended family.
Yeah.
Marcus has a comment, if our board would, anything? Please?
Thank you. Just a, a quick comment, if it helps with the discussion at all. For better or for worse, should the planning commission, um, consider this application request, um, favorably? Uh, it does then put a freeze on additional multi-family rental developments in that specific area, I think is, um, Mike Coy mentioned, uh, within a hundred-and-fifty-foot radius. So...
Minimum.
A minimum hundred-and-fifty-foot radius. And so, I, it, the, the way that the ordinance was designed was to allow this to happen, but not necessarily to allow it to proliferate a neighborhood. And so, in this instance, you know, you're not gonna see that happening because of the sort of freeze that it will put on the general area with respect to this type of, of housing, development.
And not to put you on the spot, sir, but the one person that disagreed is in your area, sir.
Yeah, he's on your street.
Oh, really? Okay.
Your neighbor.
I stay out of local politics.
Yeah, okay. Good call.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, just again, to iterate, you know, staff is here to be a support. Ultimately, it's a policy determination of the planning commission to make. You know, I, we canvassed, you know, the area with, you know, with direct mailings as well as being in touch with the property manager that manages Country Acres. Uh, you received, you know, one that said, nope, bad idea, one that said, isn't gonna change anything. You know, I, I can't necessarily say they cancel each other out, but at the same time, we also don't have a room full of people, um, saying this is, this is not a good plan, so...
This wouldn't have been as hard if we didn't have the negative.
Yeah, I know.
And I have to listen to that.
I have to get that too, which I was looking at. And I have to get ones.
Which is why I tried to almost put Marcus on the carpet, but...
I was gonna do that, but then he, he wiggled out of it. Cause he's right across the street.
He did, yes. Does anybody have any huge problems with this?
So, do you have any big problems with this?
I have, I think it's a beautiful area and I've lived near it, have been by there probably hundreds of times, and it's not offensive the way it is, and I don't see where it's gonna harm anything to, let, let be known as two different dwelling units.
I always thought it was to tell you the truth. Was two separate families, so...
All right, so you ready to move forward? I'll open public hearing, cause we haven't even got that part yet. Okay? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, so any, anyone, obviously, Mr. Goodwill's already spoken in favor or of this, I guess. Um, is there anyone else here in the audience to speak in favor? Is there anyone else in the audience, uh, in opposition of this moving forwards, other than what we have in our packets? No? Okay, perfect. Okay. At this...
That makes it easy.
At this time, I'll go ahead and close public hearing, and we will continue with this.
With the drawings provided, he's gonna spur it off. I don't, I don't see any big problems at all. The only question I have is for staff, should we stipulate the fact that such a large lot can be... can be separated again? So you look at the lot beside the house there, it fits in there.
That's, that's what I mentioned just a little bit ago, that you may wanna condition that there be no further lot splits to this lot, as long as it's going to remain a, you know, a two-unit special land use.
Yeah, I just don't wanna see some drop a house out of there.
I didn't think that was legal, anyway.
Well, if it meets the specifications for the city...
Of the lot size, yeah. Yeah?
Because that's one of the only reasons why I was comfortable with the density of a two-family in this lot, because it was the size of the yard that went with the two units. The only, the only other thing you might wanna do is, if you want, I don't know, if you wanna put a timeframe on the allowable time to achieve the parking space and the garden shed, if you wanna give them six months or a year to achieve that, or upon sale, or, you know, that would be the only...
Something has to come back to staff.
Yes.
Not upon sale.
You have prior to sale, right?
Oh, yeah.
Sir, when do you think you're going to have this stuff completed, the spur?
Whenever you stipulate.
Let's say within six months.
So you wanna move forward to sell it?
I wanna sell it. I don't really wanna have to do any of that. I mean, a year of sale, you have a person take care of it, put it at that time, I'm okay with that. But if you, you know, if this is the way that it's going to be accepted as a multiple-unit facility, then I'll do what needs to be done.
Breaking all the ground's not chosen.
Seeing part of me is questioning, as nice as all this looks, that's why I asked about the surface of that drive, and then you're gonna stick in some gravel. I'm just throwing it out there. Even, even on the mobile home courts behind you, you don't have gravel.
No, they're all paved, or concrete, all together.
And this is gonna be seen, it's gonna be at the street area.
So you think it should be concrete, is what your recommendation is?
I'm sure it's concrete.
Where I'm swaying, is based on the way, based on the way it looks and changing the character of this neighborhood, okay? Nobody else has that, or at least that I can see from this aerial.
I believe everything's, everybody's got concrete.
And you, you live there.
Yeah.
I'm just...
One thing here, as I see it, the one sheet that we have in Seneca Place, and the next one is a drawing situation, that one indicates the driveway in one spot, and the photograph shows a driveway in another one.
Well, he probably draws like me, so that's understandable.
No, I think if you're looking at, Bob, is the proposed spur, the additional one, he's stopped to the left, to the south.
That's drawn, right? Yeah. Correct.
See, the spur in the drawing will end up right here.
All right. But this is where the driveway is indicated.
You can see where the driveway is in the picture, though, so that's where the spur is gonna be.
But with this one here, it should, I thought the driveway, according to the picture, shows it here. And this one here didn't have anything.
John or Mike, can you come over and help him with what he's asking?
While, while John is...
I'm looking at the aerial, and that's correct.
While John is walking over, I'll, I'll just throw a little more back at the planning commission with respect to consideration of whether to stipulate a concrete drive versus not. Certainly, it's within your purview to do that. We have several instances within our community where folks, residents, have come and asked how come certain parts of certain roads or alleyways are gravel, how come they weren't paved, you know, why is there a sidewalk here but not over there? And so this is your, basically, only chance, if you are looking at stipulating that, to do so. Otherwise, you could, somewhere down the road, it may not be today or tomorrow or 10 years from now, but eventually it could come back where you have people asking, well, why was this allowed when the rest of the neighborhood is not allowed in that, in that fashion? Gravel drives can be very nice, though, if well-maintained, so it's not as if having a gravel driveway is, is a bad thing necessarily, but it's certainly not the same as having concrete. But this is the chance, if you're looking at doing something.
But the norm in the, over there, it is not.
See, you would have to turn it this way. It was just turned a different way.
And when they bring up the thing about harmonious and keeping with the neighborhood, none of the neighborhood has that. That's all I'm looking at. I don't live there, you guys do. I tried to throw you under the bus, but you wouldn't let me.
No.
But...
You know, I, look, there are, there are communities across the country, very variance in socioeconomic demographics, some that are multimillion-dollar estates that have, you know, crushed gravel, you know, drives. So, I mean, it, one building...
This, this is, this is the primary...
It's more about preference for the planning commission.
This home is actually over here, right, hidden behind this tree.
Oh, great.
That's why it was confused.
And this one...
I've gotta say, this is a poor indication of what we're looking at, and you can't give it justice without...
That's all.
This building here is this building here, and this building here is this building here.
This one is where?
Right here.
Maybe if it wasn't seen, then you're on the street.
See the driveway coming right in, and it goes a little bit to the other side of the, which, which makes sense, because that, that garage door probably runs from here to here. And so, yeah, they all, they all do line up, they're just turned different angles.
Oh.
Yeah, well, this, this just confuses the whole work.
This probably should have been on this side, on this side.
Yeah, the first photo is our confusion.
They're backwards.
Yeah. Yes.
So, John? Would you like to make a motion?
Would I?
I wanna. If ever.
No, I try and orchestrate.
Chairperson?
So that way, I'm not...
I'll make a motion.
Chairperson, if I might, real quick...
Yes, please.
Just mention, in a similar situation that went before the zoning board of appeals prior to coming here, and it never came here, because the zoning board of appeals denied, they needed a variance for parking, et cetera, but in reviewing the neighborhood, I had found one where there was a special use permitted by this planning commission 20 years ago. And in it, for multifamily, they definitely set a condition that parking needed to be paved. So it's not, it's something that this commission has used as a condition in the past.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to approve this special land use permit, application for 305 Seneca Place, but I would also like to add that the 10-by-20 drive would be paved. And additionally, the 10-by-20 drive and the outbuilding would be done within one year's period of time.
Are you saying that the driveway would be widened 10, 10 feet?
No, just like the recommendation was made.
Drawing, those drawings.
Hold on. Can I go back this way?
And while they're looking at that, staff, a question on the shed, does the shed itself have to be on a pad? Not knowing shed rules?
We, we, we don't typically require a pad for buildings this small. I think, I think we've set the 144 as the size that we usually go with the pad.
Building permit.
Building permit and pad, and that's why, you know, I thought, just to handle some routine garden tools, a 64-square-foot building would easily suffice. I mean, obviously, if they wanna do more, they could pull a building permit, and it would be acceptable, but it's not, I don't think it would be necessary. The only other thing I don't know if you wanna consider, Mayor, is the inability to do the future lot split.
Yes, I would. I apologize that I left that off. So, in addition, what he just said, that there can be no further splitting of that lot?
Yep. Seconded. With all that?
Who seconded?
You are.
Oh, you are.
Oh, I am? I will.
Did you have something?
Pardon?
Did you have something else?
I was wondering, wondering how it read now, with the...
Staff will read it back to us before we vote.
Okay.
Please.
Read back the motion?
Please.
I think I'll just work off of this. Motion to recommend the approval of the special land use request by Mr. Goodwill to have a duplex unit at 305 Seneca Place, subject to the following conditions: that a 10-by-20 parking stall be added off the south side of the main driveway, to be paved within one year; that a garden shed be provided for the secondary dwelling unit to have a minimum of 64 square feet, and to be installed within one year; that the yard area to the south of the dwelling units be usable by the occupants of both dwelling units; that any of the units to be rented be registered with the city's rental inspection program; and that the unit be inspected by the city's fire marshal to assure that the units meet all applicable separation requirements between the units; and that no further lot subdivision take place for this property.
Perfect. Did you get all that, Bob?
Yes, I would like to see the limitation of two cars per unit, and no boats.
We can do that. No?
Well, you gotta remember, you live in a recreational area, by the lake, and a lot is huge, so you could always put them to the back, but the one that was there, Bob, they were actually working on it. It was constantly being worked on, so...
I'll amend it to include two cars per unit.
I like that.
There's stipulations with the rentals, anyway. Am I correct, staff? X amount of parking per...
You have to have two, two parking units for each rental unit.
You have to provide, you are to provide the two parking spaces per unit. It doesn't say you can't have more, but then, you know, there are limitations. There not supposed to be parking in the right-of-way, et cetera, you know, the lawn area right-of-way. Right now, the ordinance, ordinance does not restrict, for example, someone parking a vehicle on the lawn, only if it's in the right-of-way. So, the ordinance is pretty, pretty open. You know, it's pretty open, and it's like recreational vehicles. If you can't, don't have a paved area to store them, like in a driveway, then they technically should be in the rear or side yard, not in the front yard.
So that would become part of the lease agreement, not part of our ordinance?
I'll, I'll withdraw with that comment.
I would concur with that.
Right.
Mayor Philkins.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes. Philkins?
Yes.
Bent?
Yes.
Schichtel?
Yes.
Patvin?
Yes. Thank you.
Did I get a written letter or something?
Yes, we'll, we'll get something written to you outlining the approval.
Thank you for coming, Bill.
This must be really important.
They are.
Yeah, I noticed that.
It is important.
I'm impressed I hired him.
Have you heard about this?
Yeah.
Okay. You hired him?
Yeah, I hired Brian.
Wow.
New business on our plate is vacation of the James E. Patvin Street in the Patvin Industrial Park. Having read that, Marcus will guide us some.
Thank you. I'll, I'll do my best, and hopefully I won't guide us right into a wall. So, in the interest of time, the Cadillac City Council, at their meeting last week, took a step forward after reviewing this request and established a public hearing meeting date for December 18th. Based upon the nature of the request, it requires the city council to publish public notice a couple of times and essentially skip a meeting. And it was just a simple calendar issue that came about after the, the final documentation from Piranha and the city went through the legal grinder, both here in Cadillac, as well as through Piranha, Piranha's office, actually, in Japan. And so by the time that occurred, and the Cadillac Area Industrial Fund took a look at what was going on, and it made it to the city council, if, if the council last week didn't move forward in setting the, the public hearing, we would lose easily another 30 to 60 days on this whole process. And so just in short, the process is, of course, Piranha Hose Products looking at acquiring about 30 acres of available property across the street from their current facilities. And by doing so, Piranha Hose Products here in Cadillac would essentially become the Kurayama Corporation, which is their parent company, manufacturing hub for North America. You might be asking yourself, well, why is this in front of us? Well, this is in front of you today, because there is a road that exists, it exists nowhere other than on paper, it is in front of you, and it is located basically just below the yellow highlighted area. You can see, it's about 10 feet wide, I think, is shown on the, on the rendering, that identifies the Patvin, the James E. Patvin Street. And so if, yeah, you might, you might wanna look at it on the, on the, on the screen, as John is making it bigger. And John, if you wanna even grab the laser pointer, or Carla, there you go, you can see it right, you can see it right there.
Words.
So that, that, that road, which, again, only exists on paper, is a part of making this whole project work, would need to be vacated. And by vacating the road, the city is also going to be entering into a license or an easement agreement with, with the Piranha Hose Product Company. In fact, on a parallel track, we've already initiated that process and set the public hearing for the ordinance to do that, to do that agreement in place for the December 18th council meeting as well. And, and by putting in that license agreement or that easement agreement with Piranha, that'll reserve the rights for the city to have access to repair and/or maintain any infrastructure, any utility infrastructure that exists there currently or may exist there in the future. Currently, there is a storm, I believe a storm sewer pipe that, that is in that area. Obviously, if there's an issue that should arise, we'll need to have access to it. It's certainly plausible in the future, depending on Piranha's site plan development...
Here's a railroad, right?
Or any other development that might happen in that general vicinity. Additional infrastructure, whether it's water or sanitary, may also need to go into that area. But right now, we're in very, very preliminary stages in working with Piranha in their overall site plan development, and we just don't know yet. Piranha is aware that through this vacation process, putting a building on that site would not, would not be appropriate. We did work with Piranha in developing some conceptual renderings of how their building that they would like to put on there could fit on the site, could make sure that it is able to fit, along with the delineation of the wetlands that also exist, and can also make our fire department happy with respect to being able to get a rig around there to, to service it, should there be any, any public safety emergencies that should arise in the future. And so the likely, the likely activity that would occur on that, on that area would be perhaps the placement of, of some parking. Should there be an incident where the utility should break down the road... where the utility should break down the road, Piranha is well aware that the city is going to be going in there with backhoes and whatever we have to, to, to get the utility fixed. As they, of course, would want it fixed as quick as possible. They're also aware that restoration would have to be something that they would, that they would be responsible for. And all of this is going to be spelled out as a part of the license or easement agreement that the city council will, will ultimately be considering later this month, or excuse me, later next month towards the end of December. So again, the, the item before you tonight is simply the, the consideration of the vacation of the, of that paper road. Currently, your consideration comes in the form of a recommendation. That recommendation then gets forwarded to the city council for their consideration, December 18th. John, if I could, I'd like to kick it to you, if you can just iterate perhaps some of the key points that you would put in the, in the communication in the public packet.
Marcus covered most of the salient points pretty well. Essentially, they're looking to kind of create a campus feel for their, for their development. And with Lot 9, you see these lines in there, probably 40, almost, maybe almost 50% of that lot, you know, is tied up in wetlands. So this area here for the, that was set up, set for the street actually becomes really important to making everything work in terms of parking and circulation and so forth for what they would like to do as a development site on here, merely because they are somewhat restricted and don't have the ability just to unilaterally use whatever they want of Lot 9 in that area. The city limit also stops right here, so it's not as if that road is connecting to another industrial area. In fact, the closest development on the other side of the tracks is a single family subdivision somewhere in, in this area right here. So, there is no loss of fluid movement for other future industrial users. And this allows them to kind of tie all of their development back to their existing site. And as Marcus pointed out too, we aren't losing any ground with being able to use that area for utilities. And we don't incur any risk to repair the parking or circulation aisles should they ever be damaged due to utility maintenance. So there's not a downside to the city in terms of allocating that space for their use while we retain the rights to easement for the utilities.
Their request appears to be four through nine?
Right, that's...
What?
They would be...
Why do they want nine if it's wetlands?
I could answer that. It's, it's not all wetlands, as you can see what's delineated there.
Right, yep.
We currently have the two parcels across the street that also have wetlands delineated. And it's still very usable property when we look at an industrial site because of the requirement for parking, as well as when we come around a building, the fire lane would be tied in potentially right there. So there's, we're well aware of the use of the property and still watch for the boundaries of the wetland because a lot of that industrial park has those already delineated. I can't pronounce that correctly, I apologize. They're already marked off.
Good job.
Perfect.
We're, we're able to still work with that and accommodate sharp needs as well.
And you can make all those different pie pieces work for your plane? Because they are all different.
That is why we actually wanted to purchase the entire lots there because when we put a building, as you can see, we're not going to be tied to just the boundaries of one property segment. We can actually cross over.
Right.
And that's going to allow that and it'll help us to build the potential future building that we're looking to do, so.
Can I take it that will bring more jobs?
That is definitely the hope and intent, yes.
The, one other thing, just, just to throw out for planning commission's knowledge is that there are several sort of moving pieces to the process of getting this deal done. We are doing our best to culminate them so that at the December 18th city council meeting, when there's the public hearing with respect to the sale of the property and the consideration of the sale agreement, we're also, at that same time, I believe, having a public hearing on the easement or license agreement and the adoption of the necessary agreement or ordinance that'll put that agreement in effect as well. So there's, there's about two or three sort of moving pieces and targets that we've been able to align, all for the 18th. And, and tonight is one of those major milestones as we need to, need to move forward. Their, their closing then, which is obviously subject to authorization of all of these things, would occur within about six months of getting, getting things signed off on.
Just a question, does the DEQ monitor the wetlands issues? Just a question, really?
They do. We have a, a wetland mitigation plan that actually, to, to use Brian, your words, marked off where all the wetlands are. And so that's been approved and adopted by the state and by the city years ago. Not only, by the way, for this Phase 1 area that's already been developed, quote unquote, but for Phase 2 in which the road does not yet go through, not the road that we're vacating, but where the road culminates out, there's an engineered plan that also shows how a Phase 2 can occur. And those wetlands have already been approved, signed, stamped, sealed, however you want to put it, by, by the state. So, yep.
Great. And Brian seems aware of how to work around them? That's good.
Yeah.
If, if I might add, Spencer Plastics, when they did their most recent addition, they were dealing with that also and it, it went, it went off without a hitch.
Good. Excellent.
The area's pretty well marked out there with the wetlands. So we're going to make a motion to accept this for city council?
To recommend it.
Recommend, to recommend vacation to the city council.
Any questions, anybody? Concerns? Comments? Are you good with it?
Yeah, I, I'd see no sense of denying it.
You good, Robert?
It's been there for how long?
Good.
Forty years?
Fine.
On paper?
Since the beginning. I couldn't tell you how long, but it's been there since the beginning of the, the park development.
I don't know if I word this right, but I'll try. I make a, a motion to recommend that we vacate this road to the city council to allow Piranha Hose to implement their plan.
Right.
Sounds good. Staff, you need any other verbiage?
No, I would, I'm going to, we'll report out to the city council on December 18th that your recommendation was consistent with the staff recommendation in your packet.
Okay. Roll call then, please.
Do we have a...
Oh, second. I need a second, sorry. I'm moving right along.
I'll second.
Joe. Joe, Mr. Schickto then. Okay. You're snoozing down there, Joe.
Now you're going to be in the paper.
Yeah.
Philkins.
Yes.
Schickto.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Bent.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you all for your patience.
I don't see you very often, gentlemen, but Merry Christmas and I hope you had a nice Thanksgiving.
You too, as well. Hopefully we'll see you before then.
I'll see you then. I'll see you before then.
Mayor, well, I agree.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night, Dean.
Thanks for coming, guys.
That's great.
It's huge.
See you, Ryan. Good night.
Okay. Old business, there be nothing. Perfect. Board member comments tonight?
I'd like to say we really had fun at Christmas in the park. If you weren't there, you, you missed something nice. Nice weather, nice crowd, nice Santa Claus. I didn't get a gift, though.
Done.
I didn't go online.
Oh, well. You got a gift tonight. The mayor brought it. It's in front of you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Philkins. I asked her if she'd been kind not knowing if I voted right or not. She said she's kind to everybody.
Anybody else?
No.
Gabor Faye was open this weekend, so I...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I got two ski days in already for November. That's pretty good.
How was it?
Sunday was very good. Friday, things got soft.
Did it, yeah.
Saturday was not a lot of fun. Weather changed, but they were able to blow snow for Sunday morning, so it brought everything around. And it's still a battle, but very unique. You're up there and the only thing that's white's where you're standing.
Where you're going.
For a change.
Yeah, yeah. So, they had a good crowd. They, they, they were happy. So, yeah, it's all good. So, anyway. All right. Any other board members? Okay, moving along. What have I got? Communications. Any other communications other than what we had in our packets this evening? And any other public comments? Judd, I hope you had a good Thanksgiving. Okay? You're only public right now. Other business were handled and if everybody's happy, we're out.
Hey.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.